Okay, I called in meeting to order at six thirty. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Start with the review of the minutes. Everyone had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to accept the mentions presented.
Thank you. So have a second.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's accepted. So I guess that brings us to Laurel View. So. What? Sounds good.
Okay. Attorney Paul Quest is with us through Zoom. She, Attorney Harrington, and our town administrator work with Ed Lee Che, the original author of the As Built. And confirm that things are where they belong according to that as built. So. You had already voted to waive the requirements, but A and B have been satisfied, leaving C, which is the condition of the road. And Bob Sozik is fully prepared. That's going to continue to be filed and taken fairly. But you need to make a motion to be able to have this plan presented that students left for to put on the next available town meeting. So it it needs to be a very specific motion. And you have questions. They can call Quest.
So. Do I have a I have a good question. And listen, may I ask this first? Dennis, did you want to go first?
I just want, we would we be in time to get on the fall town meeting?
I don't think so.
No.
But so just just to clarify what you just said, so all the talk about boundaries and everything that was all discussed.
Yeah.
Okay. It's kind of what we figured, right?
Yeah.
Alright. So I don't.
Was it? Was it? I'm sorry. I told you so.
I, well, sorry.
Must be a relief to the residents.
Well, I hopes will. Yeah, thank God. Alright, anyways.
Are here. So if you guys have any.
Anyone in the audience have any questions, any concerns, any thoughts?
So how do we? So I, sorry, I don't mean, but so I think we should, why we we should try to get this on to the fall agenda if we can.
Takes a day.
I don't think that's, I I don't know the logistics of it. I don't know the specifics of getting it on fall town meeting. But there are certain dates that I have to follow. So I I don't know if Attorney Paul Quest commits that or not.
Yeah, so I can speak to the sort of the timeline. So once you give your report to the select board, there is a a notice process that has to be followed to make sure that any butters who are going to need to give up any property rights, whether that be just, you know, drainage easements, anything like that. They need to be, you know, found and notified at least seven days prior to the select board's next meeting to vote on the layout. So that's sort of the time constraint that we have. Whether, you know, that's physically possible. I mean, that's sort of up to the up to the select board and and so. Then so and then once, sorry, one, once the select board votes, then it also needs to be the the layout needs to be recorded with the town clerk for, I believe, a further seven days before it can can be voted on by town meeting. So those are the the constraints that we're that we're really working with now. And as you know, it's we're getting pretty close to fall town meeting. So it would have to be.
So. I am. So how do we have to motion? So you said be very specific. So I want to make sure.
So in the motion. And Ryan, I'm not sure. Can I? I wrote down what the motion needs to be, including the dates. Can I give that to them?
Yeah, I mean, so you can provide some suggested. So what needs to be in the motion? There's really two purposes, and I'll just give you a general idea of what the motion is for. So if you're would like to sort of reaffirm the waiver of the third condition and note that the other two conditions, basically the this is the bylaw process. You can you can include that in the in the motion. The other purpose of the motion would be to fulfill the statutory process for road acceptance, which is specifically saying that the layout plan referred to by the select board, so that the the as-built plan. And we've got the the specific, I think Lori's written down the specific title of the as-built plan.
But we also have to keep putting that motion that we're, so A and B have been met. So we don't really have to make any exceptions to that, but there is an exception in C. That we're.
So so I believe you you already voted to waive those conditions. Is that correct? So.
Alright, good.
So it's sort of a reaffirmation and maybe noting that condition C continues to be waived if you'd like to do that. So that's that's one of the purposes of the vote would be just be to fulfill that the the bylaws conditions requirement. And the other purpose is the the statutory requirement, which is sort of that process I was talking about where the select board refers the as-built plan to you. Then you issue your report on the layout of the way, which is as shown in the as-built plan. Which can be just a verbal report to the select board that you recommend. Accept it or placing the placing the acceptance of placing the sorry, the layout of the way on the town meeting warrant for acceptance, for example. So. But or if you want to add any conditions as as far as that goes as well.
So I'm going to make a motion to accept the road known as Laurel View within the Laurel View subdivision off of Poveston Road. As laid out on the as-built plan dated July tenth, two thousand and four, and revised on August thirtieth, two thousand and four.
Okay, second. Okay.
And recommend me that it be sent back to the salt.
Right. Okay, so I have a motion. I have a second on the floor. Do I have any?
I'll second that.
Oh, we have a second. Do we have any discussion on that? With, I know you said, yep, with the recommendation of.
Right.
Yep. Any other discussion on motion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. And it's approved. So one step closer, folks. You got it.
And I guess you said that.
We should try to get it on there if we can. I know you will. We should try.
I have documentation ready to go. So.
It's only been twenty years almost. Yeah.
Yep.
And you said that Bob's was going to take care of the road this coming season. So they don't have to worry about that either.
He's doing that every week. He's been doing that.
I have a question.
Of course.
How many, I'm saying Laurel View. What Laurel View? When does the town lawyer know? Like you you folks, and I really appreciate the effort to try to get it on the fall town meeting would be unbelievably great. I was just wondering if there's a certain amount of time that has the warrant hasn't been placed before the town meeting. And that's what I think the problem is, is that the closing of the town warrant will hit before. And it may have already hit, which is what I have to ask. Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of dates, but if it it doesn't make it this this light.
Exactly. I mean, it's definitely, I mean, yes, ideally it would happen for the fall, but if not, at least it's.
Definitely going to be for me.
Yes. Yeah. So. Any other questions?
So we we sent it?
Yep. So.
Thank you so much.
Of course, no problem at all.
Very much.
You're very welcome. We're we're getting closer for you.
We are, yes. I've been checking this with my wife, so.
We we don't need this.
Yes, I I have the recommendation. We're all ready to go.
You're good. Okay.
Thank you again.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. Take care.
I don't know if I officially have to recuse myself, but I have to sit in the audience.
Ryan, did you have another comment?
Oh, I was just saying have a good night.
So.
You might as well just be on the safe side.
And I actually just did you just for the record, I'm going to recuse myself from the next conversation. I'm going to go into the audience. I cannot answer any questions.
We want to.
I.
Do you want to let? When I was doing the agenda, and I apologize, I usually try to tell them in the order of time wise, I didn't know if maybe one of that.
Are they here?
Yeah, this is Liz Talk.
I don't know. Yeah. Okay. Want to do that one first? You want to skip me?
Mind reordering?
I don't.
No, I don't mind it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm good. Let's let's change the order. That way we can address this first and then we can move on. Good evening.
Good evening.
How's it going?
Well, I've been in front of this board before, so.
Welcome.
So I I'm going to start with what started this off. Okay. So during COVID, when everybody else was getting cats and dogs, we got alpacas. So and so the next step on alpacas, of course, is processing the fiber. So going from this to this to this. Alright, so that means I need a fiber mill. Alright, so. In the process of trying to buy a fiber mill and trying to figure out where to put it, what to do with it. I've got pictures if anybody wants to see what it looks like. Long story short, because I know you guys are busy, is is that we looked around. I wanted it in town. Right? Because I wanted to be able to eventually, hopefully, have employees eventually, you know, start with the fiber mill and then on the front end, be able to do a yarn shop. Yarn doesn't sell in the summer. Nobody wants to do that. So kind of a two two-step process. I I found a spot in town. Problem is, it's Seven Central Street, which is in the Village District. And so went and talked to Mr. Hanks about, hey, you know, this is what I want to do. Technically, it's like manufacturing because of the equipment involved. And he said, no, can't do it. The the short version is, no, you can't do this because it's light manufacturing. You can't do light manufacturing in the Village District. And I'm going.
Is that in Baldwinville Center?
Yes.
Who's the owner of that building?
Sean Case. And so. You know, so I went, okay, well, what what can I do? Can I get a waiver? Can I do something else? And his response was, no, you can't, because the town of Templeton doesn't have a zoning, a a a a spot zoning rules at all. And I'm like, okay, but if you look at the Village District stuff, it doesn't match the the letter of the bylaw, but I think it matches the intent. I'm not, it wouldn't be next to anything. You know, it's not an extra house. It's not, you know, so it's like, okay, this isn't going to work for me now. Because, you know, the owner's going to have to move on. So what I'm coming in front of the board to try to do is is say, alright, this won't help me. Can we do something to help somebody else? Because in looking at the bylaws, I saw if you have a home use stuff, you know, the bylaws take care of that. The bylaws take care of somebody who's twenty thousand square feet above, but there's nothing in between. And the town's motto is industry. And I'm going, help me understand, you know, what's going on. And and the research I did, it sounds like the the bylaws were all put in place like twenty ten, maybe updated a little more recently. So my my ask of the board is to look at that gap, first of all, between that the the small mom and pop in the garage, whatever, and the twenty thousand, right? And say, what can we do to bring, be able to make it easier for people to bring those in-between businesses in? And then if there's something that could be done to like spot zoning, because my understanding is that if if there were spot zoning in town, then I probably would have been able to put my business in Seven Central Street. So that's why I care to say, is there something that can be done? And if so.
So spot zoning actually isn't allowed by anybody in the board, correct me if I'm isn't allowed.
Believe it's a state.
But state is not allowed. But I'm not sure what in our zoning. I mean, there are lots of things that you can't do by right, but you can do a special permit.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm just trying to figure out, like, in our, is it doing a copy of the Village District zoning by law, Lori?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a copy of the Village District?
Have to get you one.
Because we don't have it memorized.
Any kidding? Now I'm going to speak just because I'm, when zoning first came in, when it was sold before I was on the board, it was sold to us as it was supposed to encourage business coming to town. Since I've been on this board, all I've seen it do is prevent businesses from coming in and opening up. And so I understand why we need it, but it frustrates me because the years that I've sat on this board, we have denied so many businesses coming in because, oh, sorry, you don't fit in to wherever it is that you're looking to go. So it just once again frustrates me that again, we are supposed to be a town that's building industry and bringing in businesses and bringing in tax revenue, and we've done nothing but chase it away.
Well, in response to that, there was a lot of opposition to by residents who live here to the idea of certain types of industry coming in too.
And I do understand, yes, I mean, nobody wants a major factory opening in a small residential area. That I get. I understand some certain things. However, I don't think she's running, you know, a mill of, you know.
This is, this is what. And there's a big difference between light manufacturing and.
Yeah, I was I was kind of looking at that if when I was reading through it. During why there was a an opposition to light in the streets. I mean, that is the village section of town. It's not, you know, it's not up this way. It's not. So I don't know.
How big are these devices?
They're relatively small. I can fit all of them within five hundred square feet. This the space that I was looking at, it was a thousand square feet to allow for some expansion. And then also allow for for the for the actual yarn shop to be on the front end is what I was looking for.
No, obviously, it is commercial equipment. So I mean.
Yes, it is commercial equipment.
But there there is some noise that they produce, obviously, but it's not. So I do understand the.
The and you know, so yeah, you know, I I I understand where Mr. Hanks is coming from. I don't. I understand. I understand.
Put a gas station in, but you can't put.
No, exactly. And and again, this is where all, and and I do understand that we never know what's going to come up down the road. So it's you always try to write the rules so that it will encompass as much as you can for the future expansion, but it's just.
So, yeah, some I ask is just for for other people coming in, coming into town or wanting to do something, if there's something that could be changed, that's that's all.
And I guess I have a question. So there's.
Well, I was gonna.
Please.
So it's actually time, I know that I haven't been doing this long with you guys, but you're coming up on that time when you usually do a review of certain things within the code. So it could be incorporated as part of, I know you're looking at Lewiston Road. I know you're looking at Kibbe Trail. You could look at the Village District. I happen to be looking at it and talking with people. They they don't allow driving windows. I mean, so.
Because it's supposed to encourage foot traffic, right? That's why.
Right, in the Village District, yes. But you can incorporate it as part of your overall review of the code.
But. And I guess there's there's nothing in there where.
So what are you? Do you consider like this is considered light manufacturing? I mean, it's yarn. Is that what they're really considering it? Because I was just wondering if it's.
Well, I think if you look at the.
The equipment.
Equipment. It it does. I can't understand why it does fall under that.
I do, too.
Correct.
You've got people, I know you have somebody that also wants to do like embroidery on T-shirts and hats, and they want to open a business in town. And that's.
Yeah, and that's it's a obvious slippery slope where it's like, where do we draw the line of what equipment actually?
And and that's why I'm sitting here in front of you saying, can can we do something? You know, it it won't help me. I'm I'm.
Right.
I've had to go to Gardner, quite frankly, unfortunately. You know, I didn't want to.
Sorry, Dennis. I'm always mean to pick on you, but yep.
So.
No, I I, you know.
I recognize.
But yeah, I can, I can understand people wanting to keep the Village Districts as as we had set them up.
And yeah, but what about that? What in? There's nothing about that building that looks villagey. There's nothing about our Village Districts that looks villagey.
Well, they're also different, too, when that's the.
I don't know.
That was in center, maybe, but it doesn't look like it here.
But that's exactly.
All the industry in Baldwinville, that's.
And.
That road doesn't look like a village area. It looks like Central Main Road going through the center of town.
And, you know, and I thought that was, you know, a perfect spot because, you know, restaurants on both sides, you got the American Legion sitting there. You got a, you know, a pizza place, right? And I'm not right next to a house, which is what when I was kind of reading through it, thinking that was the intent was to keep that kind of stuff away from actual houses and stuff. And going, okay, why not? You know, you got the mill mills not too far away. And like, okay, that those are the rules. Those are the rules. But let's see.
You've already moved on.
Well, I I think I I think Sean's moved on to to he's he's got to rent the run the space. You know.
And and to be honest, it's a process. It's.
Yeah. It would. It's not like.
Yeah.
Correct.
You got hearings and.
Oh, exactly.
Meeting.
And so this isn't going to help me personally at this point. If things change in the future, if something was there, if the spot opened up again, then.
I guess my question is, there's nothing through ZBA to.
I I didn't go in front of the ZBA.
No, I'm just I'm kind of just, you know, learning.
Let me just quickly look at Richard's letter here.
I read that could be a very, I very long, potentially a very long process. I'm not saying that they would, but it could be. So.
So it assures me that it could be more the zoning board appeals. It's not really, right? It's not really a special permit.
Right.
Well, because it doesn't meet the criteria. I keep on reading all these. There's no there's no, there's nowhere to put light manufacturing anywhere into these by use of a special permit, non-residential uses, just just no
Yeah.
category it fits into. So we couldn't even issue a special permit if we wanted to. It would have to go to the ZBA.
Right.
Right.
But I think this point is, you know, when we're looking at zoning again, you know, this might be something we want to consider for for that area, especially that side of the street right there where you have you know, the pizza places and the legions there, and then you have where the bank used to be.
It's a commercial, like industrial.
Yeah, that's.
It is.
That was my argument.
Absolutely.
It's one of only three locations in the town that basically we do anything non-residential.
Right.
Right? This area, Baldwinville, and up toward the center. That's it.
There's East Templeton. There's the the building just off of the the center of East Templeton. What is that? Main South Main? Main?
North.
East East Templeton.
That's where we are.
Excuse me. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Exactly.
Right. It is the other one. And because I went, well, what about these other buildings? And well, they were all grandfathered.
No, pre-existing.
Pre-existing, non- reselling. So I don't, I don't know if there's any action to take.
Anything we can do at this moment? I mean, I I would say try to reach out to ZBA, maybe, you know, at least. It's probably too.
It's too. It's too late. Like I said, it's too late for me. But I I just saw this huge gap between really small and really big. And there's nothing in between. And, you know, Mr. Hank said that that he left me with the impression that spot zoning was allowable. It's just it needed to be changed in the bylaws to do that.
There's really no spot zone, like even by per per state, you can't just change one parcel to something. It all has to be overlay districts and, you know,
Yeah.
and such. Again, through special permits and ZBA, you know, there's other things that I believe they can do, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And only the and only the town residents on the floor of town meeting can change zoning.
Yeah. And and I know that, you know, so the whole thing about, I know you have to go in front of the you know, town meeting. So I know it's a lot longer process than than I really have. But i- if if there was something that the board could do to make it more conducive to to businesses coming in, this this is my ask to the board to for you to please consider doing those things.
The main reason I actually joined this board was to do just that. And sadly, it is not, John, it only cost me money. But I'm not bitter.
You're not. You're not bitter. That's okay.
I'm not.
We've all had.
Few of us on the board.
So anyways, thank you very much.
With everything, you know.
Thank you.
Where are you set up and garden or?
Um, it will be, I I've gone the 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 front part of the shop. I will be in the New England woodenware building.
Oh, okay.
So.
Excellent. Well, good luck.
Yeah, so it it took a bit of doing to find someplace because I needed five hundred square.
That's awesome. I think, John, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I stole that because I liked it. It was it was highlighted and everything. I thought you did that for me.
No, that's. Does work for you.
It was not highlighted.
Not highlighted.
Extra help.
Yeah, my highlights. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I thought we had something to look at and try to, you know, take some time and.
When we look at zoning in general, I mean, yeah, I mean, the drive-through thing is a little funny to me, not to have a drive-through at Dunkin' Donuts, but I have been to other communities.
And I remember the discussions years ago when we actually started out, it was actually to deter fast food restaurants and such in the Village District to.
It is to go in Templeton.
But it's. Yep. So awesome. Thank you.
All right, now I can go.
Yes.
I'm gonna go sit in the audience because Next Agenda involves me, and I'm not allowed to answer any questions.
Once you have to be quiet.
I I have to try to close my mouth.
So you are recusing yourself from the board.
I am. Excuse myself from the board. I'm going to go sit in the audience and close my mouth.
Oh, that's going to be hot.
Try my hardest.
Okay. So but we don't now have anyone to speak on. Okay, yes.
I will present the application to you and Mr. Lewindy, who owns the building, is here with us, too.
Excellent. Sounds great.
So on September sixth, I received an application for the property known as One Thirty-Six Patriot Road, which is currently owned by Anthony Lewindy and houses Patriot's Pizza. The back part of his building has been available for some time now. And John Buckley of Buckley Bancorp has proposed putting in a coin-operated laundromat. Under zoning, it can be approved by special permit by the planning board. It is not a by right
Okay.
operation. Mr. Buckley provided all the proper forms. All mailings happen. There's not a single butter here that I see. Mr. Lewindy signed the application with Mr. Buckley. Just to give you an idea, in your packet, there should be some examples of the equipment that he's looking for in the neck. It would be ten coin-operated dryers, which you have a picture of, eight coin-operated washers, which also in your packet. A small sign shared with Patriot's Pizza. There is no anticipation of parking issues or any changes with snow removal. There is no anticipated changes for lighting. Shouldn't be any noise issues. It'll have automatic locks and alarms for doors. Two-way video conferencing, twenty-four-hour electronic surveillance with alarms. Hours of operation are proposed at five AM to nine PM, maybe twenty-four access with security guards.
Right.
And I I think there was also mentioned, any cleanup would be so any mess is made, any mess that's currently there, which I don't know, would be maintained by the laundromat.
Yeah, anything from building inspector? Yeah, anything from um, building inspector?
No, because it's.
Not right, okay.
Right. Because it's allowed by special permit, it's laid out right in. Actually, did I do that for you? I thought I did.
What?
The actual bylaw.
Yes.
And if I didn't, I'll have it here.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Surveillance in inside and out or? Surveillance, you said, is it gonna be just inside or inside and out?
I would assume if it's for the business, it's probably just inside, the gentleman who owns the building, do surveillance cameras on the building that over there? Or just inside your, the pizza shop? Like the, do you have a camera system? Okay, yeah, but is it on the outside of the building or just?
The, I have inside right now, I have one just from the window, to see what uh, what's going on, like to watch the parking lot.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But uh, when uh, when we have two businesses, it's gonna be better to put like something like whole system.
Mm-hmm.
Two-way camera.
Thank you.
And how many parking spaces, Stuart?
Right now is uh, about twelve.
Twelve. Is that sufficient for both businesses or?
Yeah, we usually, for for me, I need just like uh. A few parking, during lunchtime sometimes, but anyways.
Customers are in and out, it's not people, you know, there all day, things like that.
No, I have most, even I have like three tables, I have like nobody to sit, you know, I mean, so always I'm looking for backup only, and most of the business for me, it's like.
Just pick up.
Yeah, because actually.
Okay. And what about trash and such?
Is it, there's dumpster over there?
Yes.
Any other questions on board?
Snow removal's not gonna be any different.
But that parking lot is already clear.
Yeah. It's not gonna be any different with both businesses versus one. Yeah.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the. Application submitted.
Second.
Well, I mean.
Well, we need a motion.
I was entertaining it.
I'll I'll make a motion that we approve, approve the proposed plans for the laundromat facility, that will be. Adjacent to the um, pizza place.
Now I'll second.
Excellent, thank you, so I have a motion on the table, uh, on floor, do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Application's been approved. Finally, we get a new business in town.
Yes. If you can hang in there for a minute, I'm giving you the decision sheet.
Do we have anything else? Thank you very much.
Um.
Any new business?
If you guys.
Oh, do you have?
Well, the King Philip Trail, the only reason I put that on, um, you're, I had been talking with your chair previously. And he had asked me, we're gonna start looking at zoning changes or review of zoning, uh. So I don't know if you guys still have, you know, you can get it online if you want a hard copy to be able to go through. And think we've already given each one, but we can reprint if you want, so that you can. Write your notes and thoughts on them as you look through them, um, I know that King Philip Trail. He and I had talked about, because it goes right through Phillipston. Normal school is going to be broken up. And they're planning on selling my bigger.
Parcels.
Talking about selling five bigger parcels, hoping to keep them agricultural. The businesses for residents, uh, so that's something to consider too.
The state is selling out parcel, who owns the?
They're working on it now.
You're working on selling what they have there? The whole.
I don't know about.
What's their motivation on that? Doesn't make any sense, can't be money, cause the state doesn't care.
I don't know.
Okay. It's interesting to.
I just don't understand what their motivation would be.
Using it to its best advantage, so.
Well, that's probably true too, but the state owns, you know, Templeton State Forest too, and they're not gonna sell that, I just don't understand, no, I just don't understand, I just don't. Doesn't make any sense to me.
What a conservation area up there too.
And and they're taking everything into consideration, so. But other than that. I'll do some reprints for you soon. That's all I have, other than scheduling your next meeting for October eleventh, I don't have anything at the moment for the agenda. If you allow me to go.
True.
I'll give you the paperwork that you need signed. This is Laurel View.
So just.
And this is the meeting minutes, it's on for me that you approved.
So all that, but Laurel View, all those, all those years, just, everything's fine.
Yeah. I don't know, I can't answer those questions.
Cause no one wanted to ask. Cause that's why we did that, we just no one wanted to ask.
You got?
I don't know if you want to.
I was just saying, I.
You can adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yep.